Good morning. The June 14, 2022, meeting of the Anorundel County Council is now in session. Today, we will wrap up deliberations on the FY23 proposed budget for Anorundel County and vote finally on all of the budget bills. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Fiedler is leading this morning.
Before we begin deliberations today, I think it's important that we have a moment of silence for Deputy First Class Glenn Hilliard, who tragically lost his life in the line of duty on Sunday. Serving 10 years with the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office, Officer Hilliard leaves behind a wife and three children. Let us take this moment to reflect on Officer Hilliard's service and the great loss his death leaves for those who loved him most, his family and his brothers and sisters in blue, who have lost one of their own. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved, Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Second, Councilman Pruski.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We will now open the public hearing on the county executive's proposed supplemental amendments to the FY23 budget. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony from members of the public?
Madam Chair, members of the council, there was no testimony received online on the county executive's proposed supplemental amendments to the FY23 budget. But since you asked the question, I did want to point out that we received about 179 submissions of testimony on the FY23 budget overall. That has all gone to the council. There is a partial summary posted online, and today I will be working on getting that completed summary posted for everyone to see.
All right. Thank you very much. We do not have anyone signed up to testify on the proposed supplemental amendments. However, if there is anyone in the audience who would like to come down and testify, you may do so at this time. All right. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on the proposed supplemental amendments to the FY23 budget is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 37-22.
Bill Number 3722: An Ordinance Concerning Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance of Anorundel County.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce our county budget officer, Mr. Chris Trumbauer, and allow you to make any comments you would like for the council.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. No comments at this time. Happy to answer any questions about the supplemental at the appropriate time.
All right. Thank you. Is there any discussion from my colleagues? All right. We will now vote on the county executive's supplemental amendments to the budget.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to block Amendments 59 through 98 as a block.
Second.
Thank you. Let's see. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to block Amendments Number 59 through 98.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to vote on Amendment Numbers 59 through 98 as a block has been adopted.
All right. Is there any further discussion on this group of amendments? Then, at this time, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendments Number 59 through 98.
Madam Chair, I think I need to read in the amendments.
Ah, I'm sorry. Yes, we do.
I'm sorry. I know that we would all like to avoid that part, but unfortunately, I need to read in.
No, no, no. Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, please read in Amendments Number 59 through 98.
Amendment Number 59: This amendment increases auxiliary and other by $2 million in order to provide one-time pay enhancements to community college employees. Amendment Number 60: This amendment increases contractual services by $30,100, which is the net effect of decreasing by $28,400 to correct a budgeting error and increasing by $58,500 for lease operating and replacement costs associated with five new vehicles and increases capital outlay by $279,000 to provide funding to purchase five new vehicles and associated equipment. Amendment Number 61: This amendment increases personal services by $560,000 to provide pay consistent with union negotiations. Amendment Number 62: This amendment decreases personal services by $73,900, which is the net effect of increasing by $61,100 to provide funding for a new cybersecurity position, decreasing by $50,000 to correct a budgeting error related to Laurel Racetrack Local Impact Aid, decreasing by $70,000 to budget new positions at the base salary, and decreasing by $15,000 to correct the amount estimated for a risk management audit, and increases capital outlay by $21,500 to correct a budgeting error related to Laurel Racetrack Local Impact Aid. Amendment Number 63: This amendment adds one Recreation and Parks Facility Superintendent position, converts from part-time contractual to full-time merit one Sports Complex Supervisor position, reclassifies one Secretary III position to an Office Support Specialist position, and reclassifies one Budget Management Analyst III position to a Senior Management Assistant position, increases personal services by $74,300 associated with new positions, and decreases contractual services by $30,000 to reduce funding for bus transportation. Amendment Number 64: This amendment increases the appropriation in the Grant Special Revenue Fund by $3,529,300 to add American Rescue Plan funding for projects in the Chief Administrative Office, Health Department, and Police Department, and other new grant funding for the Health Department and Department of Recreation and Parks. Amendment Number 65: This amendment increases operation of plant by $680,300 to correct a budgeting error related to irate revenue. Amendment Number 66: This amendment decreases contractual services in the Water and Wastewater Operating Fund by $100,000 for utility water and sewer purchases and increases Grants Contributions and Other by $3,803,000 to appropriate prior approved American Rescue Plan funding. Amendment Number 67: This amendment adds an appropriation for the Cape Town Special Community Benefit District. Amendment Number 68: This amendment adds an appropriation for the Stonehaven Special Community Benefit District from community-held fund balance. Amendment Number 69: This amendment changes the pay grade of the Deputy Central Services Officer from an NR 22 to NR 23 in the Office of Central Services. Amendment Number 70: This amendment adds Fire Communication Operator I positions in the Fire Department. Amendment Number 71: This amendment replaces Personnel Summary Pages for the Department of Detention Facilities and the Office of the Sheriff in order to correct FY22 position count errors. Amendment Number 72: Capital Budget. This amendment increases FY23 ARP grants for X 764-300 Water Project Planning by $647,000 to correct the designation of prior approved funds. Amendment Number 73: Prior Council Approval. This amendment decreases prior approved water Pago for X 764-300 Water Project Planning by $647,000 to correct the designation of prior approved funds. Amendment Number 74: Capital Budget. This amendment increases FY23 ARP grants for W 778800 Water Strategic Plan by $50,000 to correct the designation of prior approved funds. Amendment Number 75: Prior Council Approval. This amendment decreases prior approved water Pago for W 778800 Water Strategic Plan by $50,000 to correct the designation of prior approved funds. Amendment Number 76: Capital Budget. This amendment increases FY23 ARP grants for S 792700 FAC Abandonment WW2 by $396,000 to correct the designation of prior approved funds. Amendment Number 77: Prior Council Approval. This amendment decreases prior approved wastewater Pago for S 792700 FAC Abandonment WW2 by $396,000 to correct the designation of prior approved funds. Amendment Number 78: Capital Budget. This amendment increases FY23 ARP grants for S 776700 Wastewater Strategic Plan by $150,000 to correct the designation of prior approved funds. Amendment Number 79: Prior Council Approval. This amendment decreases prior approved wastewater Pago for S 776700 Wastewater Strategic Plan by $150,000 to correct the designation of prior approved funds. Amendment Number 80: Capital Budget. This amendment increases FY23 ARP grants for X 764200 WW Project Planning by $1,510,000 to correct the designation of prior approved funds. Amendment Number 81: Prior Council Approval. This amendment decreases prior approved wastewater Pago for X 764200 WW Project Planning by $1,510,000 to correct the designation of prior approved funds. Amendment Number 82: Capital Budget. This amendment increases FY23 ARP grant funding for X 741200 WW Service Connections by $1,050,000 to correct the designation of prior approved funds. Amendment Number 83: Prior Council Approval. This amendment decreases prior approved Pago for X 741200 WW Service Connections by a total of $1,050,000, including a decrease of $541,000 in wastewater Pago and a decrease of $509,000 in water Pago to correct the designation of prior approved funds. Amendment Number 84: Capital Budget. This amendment increases FY23 Board of Ed Pago for E 538800 School Bus Replacement by $500,000 to correct an administrative error related to the closure of a child project in 2015. Amendment Number 85: Prior Council Approval. This amendment decreases prior approved bond premium for E 538800 School Bus Replacement by $500,000 to correct an administrative error related to the closure of a child project in 2015. Amendment Number 86: Capital Budget. This amendment revises the description for Capital Project 8563700 PED Improvement SHA as shown in Attachment A and deletes $500,000 of FY23 bonds. Prior adopted Amendment Number 46 restores bonds of $500,000 in the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. Amendment Number 87: Capital Budget. This amendment increases FY23 Other State Grant Funding for P 588400 Crownsville Memorial Park by $100,000 to appropriate a grant for the Crownsville Hospital Patient Memorial. Amendment Number 88: Capital Budget. This amendment increases FY23 General Fund Pago for P 482400 Hancock's Historic Site by $185,000 to correct an administrative error related to the closure of a child project in 2016. Amendment Number 89: Prior Council Approval. This amendment decreases prior approved miscellaneous funding for P 482400 Hancock's Historic Site by $185,000 to correct an administrative error related to the closure of a child project in 2016. Amendment Number 90: Capital Budget. This amendment increases FY23 General County Bonds for P 576400 London Town Parking Lot XP by $140,000 based on a revised financial analysis of required onsite walkway improvements. Amendment Number 91: Capital Budget. This amendment increases FY23 Other State Grant Funding for P 479800 Park Renovation by a total of $1,154,000 to appropriate grants for the Corcoran Middle School Concession Stand, $1 million, Bachmann Bathrooms, $100,000, and miscellaneous improvements of $54,000. Amendment Number 92: Capital Budget. This amendment increases FY23 General Fund Pago funding for H 545900 R&amp;B Project Plan by $150,000 for a feasibility study related to Bruce Avenue. Amendment Number 93: Capital Budget. This amendment decreases FY23 General County Bonds for Q 577300 Cox Creek Dredging II by $14,000 based on a revised fiscal analysis. Amendment Number 94: Capital Budget. This amendment increases FY23 Other State Grants by $70,000 and FY23 General County Bonds by $76,000 for Q 585100 Dividing Creek Dredging II in order to complete the Capital Project. Amendment Number 95: Capital Budget. This amendment increases FY23 Solid Waste Bond Funding for N 535400 Landfill Buffer XP by $1,153,000 for demolition of existing structures at 134 Gambrells Road. Amendment Number 96: Capital Budget. This amendment increases FY23 General County Bonds for Q 582200 Deep Creek HW and Cove Dredging by $32,000 to add funding for an environmental mitigation payment. Amendment Number 97: This amendment removes pages for a project that was administratively closed June 30, 2021 and was inadvertently included in the FY23 proposed capital budget and program. Amendment Number 98: Capital Budget. This amendment revises the description for Capital Project H 56900 Jump Hole Road, MD 2, MD 177, as shown in Attachment B.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Mr. Trumbauer, would you like to make any comments at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. No, these amendments were all described in our supplemental letter, and my understanding is they've been reviewed by the auditor, and she's presented comments to you. So we would urge your passage of this block.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Councilman Pruski.
Second, Allison Pickard.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes.
Just briefly, again, I don't want to repeat what was already stated, but I just want to highlight and appreciate everybody working together on the fire communication operators. You know that's been a big issue in our county, and it's not a political issue, it's a public safety issue, and I hope that everyone through these amendments can support this. I think it's a good thing for our county, and thank you to the administration for supporting it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? All right. Seeing none at this time, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendments Numbers 59 through 98.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Numbers 59 through 98 have been adopted.
Thank you. And we have all just received Amendment Number 99. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 99.
Amendment Number 99: This amendment decreases contractual services by $155,000 for consultants related to annual bond sale activity, debt service by $85,000 for other costs of issuance related to debt service, and Grants Contributions and Other by a total of $1,157,500 for Pago and the contribution to the Pension Trust Fund.
Thank you. This is an administration amendment. Mr. Trumbauer, you may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. So this is our final amendment after we worked over the weekend and the auditor kind of reconciled everything. This is really the final balancing. So with all the maneuvering in the supplemental, what we determined is we needed to reduce our one-time pension contribution by about $1,000,001, so that's what this amendment does, and this will present you with a completely balanced budget.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Councilman Pruski.
Second, Allison Pickard.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 99.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 99 has been adopted.
All right. So I'm hearing from Mr. Trumbauer that this should balance everything, but I also want to check in with Madam Auditor. Do we need to take a recess to double-check all the amounts?
Michelle Bollayer, County Auditor, we have the final amendment that's needed that's been sent over, so it's more of a procedural question. Sorry, we were trying to find out how long we would need, but it shouldn't take long. I think 15 would work.
All right. Then, at this time, the council's, let's see, what time is it right now? 9:24. Let's just be safe and say the council will be in recess until 9:45. Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. The June 14, 2022, meeting of the Anorundel County Council is now reconvened. We now have one balancing amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 100.
Amendment Number 100: This amendment reduces the amounts appropriated by $11,338,900 from the Impact Fee Fund to correspond with the impact fee amounts shown as revenue in the Capital Project Fund.
Thank you. Madam Auditor or Mr. Trumbauer, would either of you like to make any comments on this proposed balancing amendment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. As advertised, I think this reflects the last-minute work between the Budget Office and the Auditor's Office to reconcile all the impact fees, and my understanding is that we agree this is the right number, so we urge your adoption.
Thank you.
It's also the century amendment, which would be a fun one to end on, so.
Not going to argue with that.
Yeah.
Madam Auditor.
Michelle Bollayer, County Auditor, I agree with what Mr. Trumbauer just said. This chews it up to reflect what's included in the capital program.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Second, Councilman Pruski.
All right. Any further discussion about this amendment?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Could you, Mr. Trumbauer, just go through the amounts for the impact fees and how it was determined how these should apply to the various districts?
So, Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer, so there's actually a very elaborate procedure that determines which projects are eligible for how many, for what proportion of impact fees. And as we go through the budget throughout this last 45 days, and we make amendments, and we swap out Pago and other funding sources and everything else, this is just the last, this is the final true-up amendment. So when I referenced that the Budget Office and the Auditor's Office were working last night to reconcile all this, this just gets down into the nitty-gritty to determine that everything is eligible and that all the amounts are correct. So this basically implements the budget as you all have amended it and as we hope that it passes in its final form.
I think our constituents appreciate explanations, as they are not experts in this, and I think more than four years are required to understand this stuff, so.
Yeah, the impact fees are definitely a complexity of the budget. So there's a lot of words on here, and I'll just summarize by saying this is really what we would consider a true-up amendment to make sure that all the impact fees are correctly programmed into the right projects and that it all balances out at the end.
Much appreciated.
Sure.
Thank you. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I just had a quick, maybe this is a technical question. Everywhere it says Office of Finance, non-department, department is cut off. The word is not in full. It happens a bunch of times. Is that okay, intentional?
It's probably because the form has, I'm going to imagine the form has a set number of characters, and Office of Finance, non-departmental is probably a few letters too many.
Just making sure.
But I think the intent is there, and that we all agree that this does what we want it to do.
Perfect. Thanks.
All right. Seeing no further lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 100.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 100 is adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 37-22.
Bill Number 3722: An Ordinance Concerning Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance of Anorundel County.
And, oh, Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is my eighth and final budget, and I do want to go in the record, even though it's been stated before that my spouse is an employee of the school system, and per ethics protocol, I can vote on this. But I just wanted to take a moment after my eight years' last budget to kind of thank a few people. A lot of people don't realize, and I know we say this over and over again, how much work the Auditor's Office and Ms. Bollayer and her staff put in, and I'm talking late-night calls because she's taken them even there. So I just want to thank you and give you a round of applause. Thank you for all your work. And then also, Madam Secretary, I know that Ms. Corby takes calls in the middle of lunch, at home, and dinner, along with the staff that's in the back, along with our aides. There's a lot of background work that, you know, just happens. Everyone sees numbers, as Ms. Lacy pointed out. There's certainly a lot of effort that goes in, and sometimes it's hard to confuse about what's being stated, what's there, but there are people actually doing that work to get to where we have a final product. So I just want to thank them and give Ms. Corby and the staff a round of applause as well. Appreciate you. And last but not least, just to talk about the budget, I just want to thank the county executive for putting in a fiscally responsible budget. I think that, you know, this took a lot of work, it took a lot of effort, but I think that a vote for this is really a win for the citizens of Anorundel County, particularly the investment in schools. I've been on this council for eight years, I was on the Board of Education, I've been involved probably 20 years in different things, and the capital budget being funded completely, also the amount of teachers being added and staff, I mean, I really think it's going to make a difference for our future. And we know with COVID, there was a lot of, you know, struggles for our teachers, our staff, so this investment's going to be huge. I could go on about the other areas as well, but the infrastructure, operating capital, it's a great budget. I hope we get to a 7-0. I really do believe that this is a great investment for our future. I'm looking forward to supporting it. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I echo a lot of the sentiments that Councilman Pruski just said, particularly with this being a fiscally responsible budget. You know, for the last three years, I've certainly had my qualms with the budgets that have come down from the county executive, but in this budget, I do want to give credit where credit is due. We have been calling for tax cuts, and this budget does that. We have been calling for the elimination, not creation, of structural deficits. This budget eliminates the structural deficit. We've been calling for maximization of our rainy day funds. This budget does that. I certainly believe that down the road, we may see some recession or even, you know, economic hardships, if it's not exactly a recession, but I think having the Rainy Day Fund at the level that we've put it in this budget and with the increase to 7%, we've really put the county in a good position to be protected in the event there is a downturn. So with that said, I have a lot of things personally for my district that I think are great in this budget. One of the things I want to particularly point out is Amendment Number 98, which corrected the project description for the Jumper's Hole Project, and I appreciate the Budget Office and DPW working with me on that, because I think that where we arrived really balances the concerns of all the communities that are affected by that project, in addition to some other capital programs or projects that are coming to my district. So I'm actually, I'm going to proudly be supporting this budget and voting yes for it, but with that said, I just wanted to kind of give an explanation for why, and appreciate the county executive bringing this down.
Ms. Pickard. Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not going to repeat word for word what my colleagues... I'm not going to repeat word-for-word what my colleagues have just stated, but today is a good day for Anarundel County, not just for the year 2022, but for generations to come. This budget is a culmination of the last four budgets. I'm proud to have been advocating and supporting all four budgets that have brought us here today, but the infrastructure impacts, the... With school construction and our public safety investments and our sound, responsible, necessary investments in our human capital, the individual county employees and school system employees that carry out the fundamental work of county government should be applauding this budget today. We have a hard, serious labor market to contend with, and it is going to be a challenge not just this year, but in years to come. But we're making the investments. This is what I came to do as a county council member, and I'm extremely proud of the work of the last four years. So I look forward to saying aye in a few minutes.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Let me start with the fact that I very much appreciate the dialogue with the auditor, Madam Secretary, the administration. I see this budget differently than my colleagues. I am not going to be able to support the budget today. I actually agree with Councilwoman Pickard that this budget is sort of the culmination of the last four. It definitely builds on... I'm sorry, on the last three. It definitely builds on the last three, and I think it's important when considering today's budget that we actually look at it in the context, not just of right now, but over the last couple of years, what we've seen happen in the county and what's coming in the next year, two years, three years, et cetera, from a fiscal standpoint. A few specific issues that I really looked at in that context... I always go back to the Spending Affordability Committee and their recommendations, because I think that that's a critical piece for us to review. They recommended a budget increase of roughly 3.5% on the operating side. That would have been $1,809 million. This budget is extraordinarily in excess of that, even when you remove the one-time funding. The Spending Affordability Committee specifically noted its concern that this sort of repeated large increases in spending year over year is going to drive the need for future taxes and fees in the upcoming years. That's a huge concern that I share. They also noted that a lot of the greater-than-anticipated revenues that the county executive and the administration discusses now are from temporary sources, and we really need to be very careful about using that in any way to predict future revenue. And so if you, you know, if I look, the money being spent today versus the money that was spent in FY '19 when the current administration came in, there's more than half a billion dollars of additional spending in those four years, $567 million. Even... And that's unduplicated general fund numbers. Even if you take out the $262 million in one-time revenue that the administration has talked about being spent this year, we're still, just looking at the recurring money, I mean, we're something like 19% increase over the last few years. This year alone, it's a 7.4% increase in recurring budgetary numbers. That's a huge jump in one year. We heard a couple of times the administration reference that that is kind of tracking the inflationary number, and they've used it as a benchmark. I don't subscribe to the theory that an increase in recurring revenues and expenditures should closely track inflation. To the contrary, when inflation is at its... The worst we've seen in decades, I think local government should be tightening its belt and returning as much money as possible to our hard-working families. I mean, folks are paying, you know, $5 a gallon for gas. Food costs are through the roof. It's really hard for folks to meet their, you know, make ends meet. It's just not right for us to kind of grow the budget at this unsustainable pace. I do want to talk about the tax piece for a little bit, because the county executive has billed this budget as sort of having tax cuts in it. I am always happy to see any money returned to the taxpayer, so I am happy to support the lowering of any tax rate, but I do want to make it clear that I would not sell this budget as a tax cut. The budget is giving back essentially pennies on the dollar for what was imposed in year one of this administration's budget. And so while I am glad to see money going back, I really don't think it's... I mean, you're taking $10 out of your left pocket and putting a dollar back in the right pocket and saying, "I give you a tax cut." That's not accurate. There are some very good things in this budget. I was happy to see the... Councilman Pruski mentioned the call-takers in the supplemental, the sheriff's cars in the supplemental, the 911 center. You know, there's a lot of good things here. I am happy about maximizing the rainy day fund. Been supportive of the bill to increase that threshold this year. Obviously, I was the lead sponsor in the bill last year, so I think there are some very good things. But when we're evaluating the budget, we are tasked with looking at it holistically and in all the contexts that surround it, and this budget unfortunately kind of continues that trend of unchecked, unsustainable spending. I can't support that fiscal behavior. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So I do want to thank our staff and the Budget Office for weeks of answered questions and back-and-forth. It makes our job a little easier when we get that information. I'm not going to reiterate the points of Mr. Volkey on this budget, but I do agree with those, and I do want to say, when we look back on Amendment Day, that's a big day for us, and historically Amendment Day has been a trail of 4-3 votes. I had hoped that we would be able to come together and get more bipartisan amendments through that were not just ones recommended by Madam Auditor. So it was disappointing that that didn't happen this year, but this budget is more in line with the intent of the amendments of previous years. I also want to note that we heard a lot from literacy specialists within the school system and school counselors. That is a layered onion that this council cannot peel on its own. I hope that it is addressed at the state level for those in literacy specialties and school counselors. You know what I'm mentioning, and just know that we discussed it, we attempted it, but it's bigger than just this council. I did have an opportunity after we heard from the police department to go out to their practice range, because I felt that the pictures really didn't, you know, give us a good illustration of maybe what was in person, and that was 100% accurate. I won't go into details, but it is time for our officers to have a safe range that they can use in all weather. And the Joint 911 Call Center is something that Mr. Pruski and I have stated, that it's time for Anarundel County to move in that direction. So all that being said, this is a budget that is more in line with what we've been trying to do in the minority party for the last four years, and my vote this morning will reflect that. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to make it clear, I've already indicated why I'm voting for this budget, but here are the reasons I'm going to vote this way, or I'm not going to vote against it, because a vote against this budget is a vote against a tax cut. A vote against this budget is a vote against more 911 call operators and a call center. A vote against this budget is a vote against a new firing range for police officers. Putting aside politics, that's why I'm voting for this budget. While I don't have a crystal ball, and jokingly, in every budget discussion up to this one, that has been the ongoing joke, we have made every effort possible in this budget to protect this county and our employees from the inevitable downturn that we will see in the economy. Given this budget, if that downturn does not come immediately, we may even be in a position to see greater tax reductions in future budgets. That's called being fiscally responsible. That's what I'm about.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd echo a lot of the things that some of my colleagues have said, but I think to just sum it up, I'd say that this budget puts people in critical services first, while continuing the program of key infrastructure investments that we began three budgets ago, some of which we've been able to complete, and it's been very satisfying to see. It's still true that our county has a lot of competing needs that can't be met all at once, and that will probably be the case every single year that we have a county budget. But some folks have been waiting a very long time for improvements to their schools, public safety and recreation resources, sidewalks, and community centers, and this budget delivers. I will enthusiastically vote yea. Or aye, whatever the heck we're saying these days.
All right. It looks like maybe I get the last... I get the final word here. First, I'd like to actually echo what my colleague, Mr. Pruski, said regarding ethics. I'm a part-time public employee for Anarundel County Public Schools, but ethics rules have indicated that it is acceptable for me to vote on this budget, and I will do so enthusiastically. I will enthusiastically support it. I'm so thrilled that in a time when we've had, you know, several difficult years, you know, in so many ways for the people in our county, you know, coming through the pandemic, businesses have had a hard time, individuals have had a hard time, we had longer lines at our food pantries than we've seen in the entire history of the county, and to be coming out of that and to be rebounding in a way is very remarkable. And so to be able to push our county forward despite, you know, we do nationwide and worldwide are dealing with inflationary issues, you know, due to supply chain, loss of, you know, loss of a major provider of oil exports, even if the United States wasn't the recipient of them, we're facing that. We're still part of that. We're in those same weeds as countries all over the world. But for our county to be able to still make forward progress in the middle of all of that and still with, you know, the final... I never say... I'm never going to say COVID is over, because we... Every time we've thought it might be nearing the end, it comes back to bite us again. So we've positioned ourselves to continue to address the pandemic slash endemic. We've made investments in public transit. We've made enormous investments in public education, including ones that will help make sure that there are teachers in a classroom when there are not only statewide, but county-wide, statewide, but nationwide shortages of teachers, and we absolutely must remain competitive. We've made historic investments in our school infrastructure, but also in our infrastructure outside of the schools. We've made wonderful investments in our parks. I'm thrilled in my district to see, you know, something that's been an issue hanging around District 6 for, I think, close to two decades at this point, is the future of Crowesville State Hospital Center, and to see that finally coming home and becoming part of the county is... I just... I can't wait. I can't wait for that to be finalized, and the steps that, you know, we moved towards that in this budget are amazing. Affordable housing has become, you know, was already an issue in our county four years ago, but for us to be making another historic investment in ensuring that affordable housing is a priority for our county government, you know, once upon a time, there was some president who said, you know, "Government is the problem." Well, I think Anarundel County has taken great steps towards being the solution, and I'm thrilled to be part of that. Historic investments in public safety, as my colleagues have mentioned, the 911 center and the operators. We've improved the salaries and the compensation in all of our public safety departments, fire department, detention officers, police officers, and, you know, it helps. That makes it possible for us to hire and make sure that those positions are filled. I could go on and on, but I will just finish by saying we've done all of that, and we've stayed one of the lowest counties in the state with respect to both property tax and income tax. So I think anyone would be crazy with... I won't actually say you're crazy, but I think this is a remarkable budget, and I'm thrilled to be supporting it. So with that, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number, let's see, 37-22 as amended.
Mr. Pruski.
Enthusiastically, aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill Number 37-22 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 38-22.
Bill Number 38-22, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Special Community Benefit Districts, Shore Erosion Control Districts, and Waterways Improvement Districts.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 38-22.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 38-22 has passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 39-22.
Bill Number 39-22, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Arundel Gateway Special Taxing District.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 39-22.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 39-22 has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on... Oh, excuse me. Please read the title of Bill Number 40-22.
Bill Number 40-22, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Arundel Mills Special Taxing District.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 40-22.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 40-22 has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 41-22.
Bill Number 41-22, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Dorchester Special Taxing District.
Is there any further discussion? Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 41-22.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 41-22 has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 42-22.
Bill Number 42-22, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Farmington Village Special Taxing District.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 42-22.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 42-22 has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 43-22.
Bill Number 43-22, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, National Business Park Special Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 43-22. Bill Number 43-22, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, National Business Park Special Taxing District. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 43-22. Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 43-22 has been passed. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 45-22. Bill Number 45-22, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Two Rivers Special Taxing District. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 45-22. Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 45-22 has been passed. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 46-22. Bill Number 46-22, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Village South at Wall Chapel Special Taxing District. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 46-22. Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 46-22 has been passed. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 47-22. Bill Number 47-22, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget Income Tax. Is there any further discussion? Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 47-22. Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
I just want to explain my vote on this one real quick. Councilwoman Volkey, a minute ago, said that a vote against the budget was against a tax cut. The tax cut's actually in this bill, Bill Number 47-22, where it does lower the rate on the first $50,000 of income. I'd like to see this go a lot farther, but I am happy to support this tax cut. Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 47-22 has been passed. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 48-22. Bill Number 48-22, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Arundel Gateway Special Taxing District. Any discussion on this bill? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 48-22. Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill Number 48-22 has been passed. Thank you. Madam Secretary, is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Mr. Trumpauer, you may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumpower, Budget Officer. Now that the voting is complete and the budget has passed, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank each of you on behalf of the county executive and his administration. I think this was a collaborative process. I think the administration enjoyed working with you, and the Budget Office enjoyed working with the Auditor's Office. And just the fact that we're about to adjourn at 10:15 in the morning is pretty extraordinary, considering the history of these sorts of deliberations. But I want to add on a personal note that I have been personally involved with 12 county budgets, eight of them when I sat up where you are now as a council member. And that's been four different administrations. The last couple, I've been your budget officer. And I just want to say, this is the best budget I've been a part of. For all the reasons that at least six of you articulated earlier, this is an extraordinary budget. It does cut taxes. It does historically fund the school system. It builds up our reserves. It positions us well in the future. I think it's a budget that everybody should be proud of, and I'm very excited for the possibilities that Anorundal County has now in this upcoming fiscal year. So thank you on behalf of the executive and on behalf of the Budget Office, and look forward to continuing to work with you in the future.
And before we adjourn, I just would like to add one last round of thanks to all of the staff in, to Madam Auditor and all of her staff, and to our county council administrative officer and their team, because everyone plays a huge role in this, working long days and long nights at times. There is no such thing as a lazy government employee in the group of people that have worked in this. So thank you so much for your very, very hard work and for being here all the way through to the end and getting us, and making it happen so smoothly. So with that said, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The county council is adjourned until 7:00 PM on Tuesday, June 21, 2022, when we will meet here in the county council chambers for a normal legislative session.